Board of Commissioners, meeting is in order. Today is July 9, 2020, and the meeting is now in order. I will turn to Commissioner Hill and to ladies and gentlemen.
Lord, we thank you for today. Another opportunity served, and Lord, we just ask that you get involved in this nation, and we need your peace and mercy at this time especially with everything that's going on. Lord, we just ask for unity. Lord, I pray for all of our first responders, our police officers, our firemen, and our health officials. But with all the stuff that's going on, we just ask that you pour out a special blessing to those folks in Jesus' name.
Amen. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of Agenda. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to read through their packets. I will entertain the motion to approve the Agenda.
That's true.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
None.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up, the citizens' comments. I know we've got one person who wants to speak tonight, so Mr. Scott Turner. Is he the only one ready before him, or?
So the only person we have on the line so far is phone number remaining in 5528. Caller, any 5528? Can you identify yourself, please?
Hey, this is Gary. How can I help you?
Okay, Gary, welcome. So Mr. Turner's not with us yet. If you want to, what I can do is I can give you an extra time if he joins the call, and I will write you an opportunity to write a comment if you like at that time.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just move on from there and move into the financial report.
No changes.
All right. Check that off the list, and we'll move into the consent agenda. The action request here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Make the motion to approve it as submitted.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second there. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
None.
And any opposed? Motion carries there. Whole business is to continue discussion of requests to update the noise ordinance by the Victorian Youngsville. I know we've had some information presented to us from Mr. Cordero. We've got a map here in front of us as well, so I'll just kind of open it up for discussion. Phil, do you have anything that you wanted to add prior to?
Mr. Turner, I just wanted to ask any questions. I just want to note that the dots on this map that's in front of you indicate those that were in favor of extending at least until 10:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. Many of those dots will also correspond with individuals that were located with this at 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. every day of the week and/or 11:00 p.m. on weekends and/or on days of the week. So to make things simple and to not make it too difficult to read, again, the dots are just people that were in favor of extending at least until 10:00 p.m. on weekends, and then the X's on the map are those that are in opposition of any change to the ordinance at this time. It's all answered.
All right. Any discussion?
I'm fine with what Phil sent out. Stuff is good.
I was happy to see that there were so many responses.
I think we knew that a lot of these responses felt good.
Correct.
Now, if you could refine the data, give me a little bit more time. I can refine the data, so we need, you know, the initial data that I sent out, I think, contains an overwhelming picture of support at least until 10:00 p.m. on weekends. However, you know, I can certainly segregate that to the data points, you know, that are outside the corporate limits, such as those people who are not town voters, they don't have access. Here it is in the commentary section. But this is something I'd want to at least put together for this meeting, so we have some. I think you can still clearly tell, I think it's probably a 2 to 1, 3 to 1 ratio of those that are in support versus opposed union corporate limits. I think it was about 10 to 1, 12 to 1 when you looked at who's there outside. But again, I can provide additional data analysis to be able to know as a follow-up.
Well, I mean, even though there's some that are outside of the corporate limits, I guess it's good to see people and, I guess, see what they, how they would weigh in. I'm assuming that a lot of these people would probably visit, even though they don't live in town, they would visit the downtown corridor.
Yeah, but they don't sleep there.
Well, that's true as well. That's true as well. Okay. So any more discussion, Commissioner Redd, Commissioner Wiggins, Commissioner Headman?
Just wondering, but right now it's 9:00 p.m. is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's right.
That's what I thought. Totally. I just wanted to. And I thought it should be noted that we're on enforcement.
Line, you did. Line and you did.
Can you say that quickly?
Yes, sir. The officers were given a directive this week, whether it be by complaint of a citizen or by observation after 9:00 p.m. to take a decibel reading from that complainant's residence, so we can actually have a baseline of the amount of noise that's registering and added to the residence, notify the business owner of the particular violation and officer discretion. Certainly, if it's all outside of the business and its applicable sound of those at that time, go ahead and turn it down where we can't hear it outside the business and they're not in violation of the noise ordinance. The officers will also do a comprehensive incident report, so we'll give, again, a good baseline of the number of violations. If any citizens' comments, perceptions that citizens may have in regard to the violation of the noise ordinance, and again, utilize the decibel meter, we'll have real value for just exactly how much noise has been emitted from those particular businesses.
That's a reasonable question.
Yes, sir, that's a reasonable question.
And it was a response to some of the feedback that you provided, and I think what may have happened, or we have kind of experienced in just general, I think, there are concerns like this, you may, or a citizen, another citizen may adjourn or may complain to maybe someone who happens at 9:00 p.m., happens at the white sound, but unless someone calls the police department and makes a full-on complaint toward the county, and is aware of it, there's no way that we can do anything about it. Now, I do agree, and in most similar circumstances to our enforcement activities regarding traffic and noise vehicles, you know, things of that nature, there's a lot that we can do to be forward to ensure that the officers are putting down their checks of things to be observing when they're out and out in the community. So I appreciate you calling us at that. I think we'll also solicit feedback in the community to make sure that, you know, when violations are occurring, that they actually get reported, so that way we can follow up on this.
If we corrected the problem with the county as far as calling the police department after hours.
Can you provide a little bit more detail on that?
Well, if you call 911, which everybody's been told to do, they said, "We don't take those dollars." What did you remember?
Got it. Can you check my background, too, quickly?
Yes, sir. I'm not familiar with that, as the, so it's my understanding that the dispatcher is telling them that their line is for non- or is for emergency use only, and they're not providing any dispatch for our officers based on that. Okay, well, this certainly is the first I've heard of it, and it's my opinion that they say dispatch any call that comes into 911. I'll check on that this weekend, and we'll see if we can, I'll take something further back.
My church works.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, do we have any more discussion?
I just have a comment. I'm sure based on the data that we have and the percentages, it definitely looks like overall, you know, the amplified sound until 10:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday has overwhelming support in general, and 11 o'clock has pretty substantial approval as well for Friday and Saturday.
And then, to Commissioner Wiggins' point, I will break that down to make sure that we eliminate some of this bad data that's outside of the darker gray shadow.
Well, I would appreciate that, because I noticed one of your doctors is a great contributor who lives. He told me personally, he moved.
Got it, yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so as Ms. Hurd pointed out in our last meeting, before any changes are made, we do need to set a public hearing to kind of sound off on this. Do we feel comfortable moving forward with setting a public hearing for the next meeting, or do we want to wait until we have more data from the condensed data from Mr. Cordero? How do we want to proceed?
There, flowers. I think before we have the level of hearing, we actually have to have proposed changes, is that correct?
The app is correct.
Okay.
So once we have the information and we decide how we want to change it, then we can go to that level of hearing.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Thank you for that clarification. All right.
Yeah. I apologize for interrupting, but so, you know, you could certainly pull, you know, we can put in a separate agenda item for a public hearing on, you know, amplified sound ordinance, and just encourage public feedback for the legal purposes of modifying the template of ordinances, because there would not be a specific amendment, whether that's 9:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m. or weekends only, or, you know, every day of the week, that public hearing wouldn't satisfy the legal requirement, but certainly, you know, you're not precluded at any time from, you know, soliciting feedback for a public hearing on, you know, matters of general public discourse. So if you wanted to put a separate agenda item on, you know, next month's agenda that is set, and when people get the agenda, you know, it says, "Hearing on amplified sound", we can certainly do that. It just, we've not satisfied the legal requirement.
Okay, that's fair. And, you know, all in all, we've already received a lot of feedback from the Facebook posts, from the door hangers, and I don't know if people have emailed or, you know, been by a person. So that satisfies me, and I appreciate Ms. Hurd for clarification on that as well, so.
I think Mr. Turner's joined us. You've left a hearing.
So can I say here, or am I hearing that next meeting, you have to discuss early to actually be decisive about what the lines of change, and then have a public hearing after that? Or we can have a public hearing, have public input, and then the following meeting actually make the changes?
So the future course of action is, and it's worth the pleasure, the legal requirements to change the ordinance would be that a public hearing is conducted, and in order to conduct that public hearing, the public has to be informed about what specific changes we make. So, you know, if you wanted to at this meeting say, "Well, let's just go with 10:00 p.m." and we schedule a hearing, and I think you could draft the language, we can put that in the agenda packet, then you could do that. And then if you wanted to change your mind, you know, not, you know, approve the amendments to the ordinance, or if you wanted to change to 11:00 p.m., if you want to change to 11:00 p.m., I think that would require another hearing for the 11:00 p.m. versus 10:00 p.m. amendment language, is that helpful?
Yes, so that says to me that we have to wait at least two more months to make any changes.
The, I heard we talked about that, I heard from Mr. Turner, but I believe as long as the public hearing is satisfied, you could take action in the same meeting, is that right?
Yes.
So.
Unless we decide to change what we said.
Yes, if you wanted to change the language of the amendment to say, let's say, 11:00 p.m. instead of 10:00 p.m., it would require another public hearing. So we delay action for another month.
I don't know that if you do take action on the ordinance the same night that you first introduced it, the first bunch you have for a period, you'd have to have a certain percentage of, so take a higher percentage of, or if you consider that, you could go with a different one.
Well, in view of that, we have social distancing rules. I can't even compare how you would have an amplified sound on it, that's all, like time to deal with it.
I understand your point, I guess one of the, you know, one of the vendors that brought this up initially, although there is, I think, a number of vendors in our Main Street business area that are stakeholders in this change, are exempt from the governor's restrictions on gatherings because they primarily delay interreligious ceremonies, and so therefore are not subject to restrictions. So just to note that for the record, but I understand your point absolutely.
I'm actually, I'm not 100% sure that you require to have a public hearing on that particular ordinance change, although it's, you know, usually it's not virtually like that, it's absurd.
If you could look into it, I think, I tend to breathe you out 100% sure, but I think certainly doing a public hearing is better than not, or, you know, just, you know, you can first research your work after, so I'm sure that's important.
And it's always good, I mean, just for clarification's sake, to me, it's always good to allow people to have the opportunity to sound off, even though they've had, you know, Facebook gatherings, door hangers and whatnot, it's certainly a little bit different when people are actually in front of a microphone or on the phone to address us and let us know their concern, so.
So they'll have to be on the phones, I'm assuming, the next meeting?
I'm guessing this might be.
I'm pretty sure the restrictions will still be. I think the governor's got a press conference scheduled for the 24th, I believe, in this month, so we may have to, there's no guide to send, but as far as I heard, I have pretty negative feedback, other than, you know, it's my audio quality issues that I think we bore down, but, you know, we also provide a public comment opportunity via email and rating, and so I think. But I said, I see your point, that, you know, engaging in person is different than engaging over the phone.
All right, do I hear any further discussion? Okay, and do we know for sure that we have Turner?
All right, yes, yes, sir.
All right, is that the end of that conversation? I would like to, I'd like to try to make a public hearing happen next month, if you think it's possible, and what you need from us to do that.
We'd have to have clarification on exactly what the hearing's going to be about, so we'd have to move forward with, you know, 10 o'clock this month.
Well, it sounds like Commissioner Redd is, at the beginning, is trying to make the motion to potentially have staff draft language to modify the amendment to 10:00 p.m. on the weekends, and given initial data in the interim between now and then, and additional deliberation amongst the board members, you know, if you feel prepared, you know, we certainly have a hearing, and if you feel prepared at that time, you can take that to the use of desire, if not, then you can postpone until a future date if you're choosing one. But, you know, that, I think that's what we're getting at, right?
I would prefer without hearing, yes, next, yes, so all of those.
Because, I mean, to his point, you know, the only thing that could really happen is if you want, you do make the motion and go through that, or we just.
But we need to start somewhere in the sense of not evolving tickles for.
Or continue to the next meeting.
So we, if I can, is now our time to make a motion?
You made a motion, and you have any time to.
That's what I love about.
You could.
I would like to make a motion that I ask the town staff to draft up something that says 10:00 p.m. on weekends for a public hearing for next time, and then we can just go from there, and try to look into it, and we'll figure it out itself. But that is right, moving forward. Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Sure.
All right, a second from Commissioner Headman. All right, any discussion on the presented motion for 10:00 p.m. before we move to vote? Hearing no discussion, I'll hold for votes, all in favor?
All right.
And any opposed?
None.
And I just want to reach your attention, Mr. Mayor, that Commissioner Johnson is contemporaneously attending this meeting via telephone, and I will, now, Commissioner Johnson, are you with us? Commissioner Johnson, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, not wrong. Commissioner Johnson, did you hear the motion that was made for 10:00 p.m. extension of the amplified sound time on weekends only?
Yes, I did, and I'll play that after the.
All right, so three out of one name.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, I'll place you on the email.
Thanks, sir. All right, so we got out of the agenda for a little bit because of Mr. Turner not being here during the first time we called for citizens' comments. Do we have Mr. Turner now?
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Turner.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. I'll open the floor for your citizens' comments, sir.
All right, perfect. So one of the, one of the board commissioners, please, yes, you guys, all right. So the topic is, I'm getting feedback, sorry.
Mr. Turner, if you drive on, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, very difficult for me to leave some feedback at this point. So the topic is noise ordinance, which I've heard people speak before, so it's quite a whole different topic. So specifically, Section 8.29, sound active for this life. I come to my, in fact, three guys, a few that notice, it's my opinion that it was expected March 2013. Specifically, the ordinance looks at construction Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 13 hours, Saturday, Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 10 hours. I just feel that's a little bit of a heavy burden on our community, especially in these times of a pandemic where people are working from home and trying to educate from home. I feel like in my observations where people are trying to conduct for a minute, educate their children after hours, or leading really hard on our community after box, and especially on weekends where that would be a time of deep crisis. So I'm really asking this board to revisit that ordinance to clarify 2013 in light of what our community's feeling right now, and how we're trying to operate on these details.
Okay, Mr. Turner, anything else?
No, I think that's, that's my answer.
Okay, well, we thank you for your time, thank you very much.
Sorry, thank you.
You know, Mr. Mayor, just want to clarify, so Mr. Turner is mentioning an issue where, you know, there's construction noise that's bothering him and his family on the weekends, and currently the ordinance allows that Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. and between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays, and his proposed modification would be 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, so again, it would be 7:00, it's currently 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. He proposes 7:00 to 5:00 p.m., and then the Saturday hours, which are currently 8:00 to 6:00, he would propose to be 9:00 to 5:00. And so, you know, this is when, you know, people are doing construction, permanent construction nearby the town, and wanting to improve their own things of that nature, so just want to make sure that we're clear in the background and having answered any questions as well.
Sure.
So this would apply to me building a deck on my back porch, but also someone building a new home in a neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, to the commissioners, any questions, comments, concerns? Any questions for Mr. Cordero?
Would this be similar to what we just talked about, so to make a change, we would have to do a public hearing, et cetera?
Yes, pending the House by the attorney, and I actually sent the ones, yes.
Yeah, as a general rule, for most ordinance, you would not require a statute for a public hearing, for most, most, several ordinance, you require a new or a fixed legislation or, so, as a general rule, you're not legally required as a public hearing. That would probably fall under the category of not required for a public hearing. But again, a lot of boards do public hearings just out of a tenuous, but they're typically not required.
So I would think in this case, what do you think in this case?
I, yeah.
I'd like to make a direction for those.
It's not, it's not worth it, yeah, it's, I don't believe in my position that, you know, we want our government, obviously, the two things you have at competition here, you know, from the public policy perspective, are, you know, someone's right to enjoy their home and be quiet, and then another person's right to improve his or her property, to improve its guidance, so, you know, those are both legitimate interests, it's just a matter of, you know, to extend, if you want to live in one right to the other, I mean, that's the board's prerogative.
I remember when we set that, when we changed that ordinance a while back, it was specific at that time in the Patterson Woods area, because all were new construction, and they were allowed to do it much later than that at the time. It might be enough time to relook at it again. Food for thought. So right now, if I understand it correctly, they start, what time do they start on weekdays and weekends, 8 o'clock, 8:00 a.m.? Is that correct?
Ah, so weekdays is 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and on weekends is 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Just in comments, I think that's 7:00 a.m. is a little early.
Well, I think, well, I definitely don't disagree with that. We're also right with the summertime more, and it's hot, so I can, I can understand both sides of that, but those guys trying to get out there early is somewhat a BTE.
Maybe we can do it seasonally, if we change it, change it seasonally. Remember me? If we do.
Why does Mr. Turner resign?
Patterson Woods.
I mean, I had a guy over to change it at 7:00 a.m. the other day, just because it was so hot, I wanted to clear and brush. I got hit in the head. Also, they just put up on 1A Patterson Woods, and it started 6:30.
Okay.
I'm gonna wait for it, stay in the line about that time.
Yeah, I think that's a similar issue to the amplified sound, where I think it might just happen, you know, people were kind of for, you know, on a chance, so it's, you know, prohibited by ordinance, and we never get a more report back, so I think what we can do to educate, you know, the public about, you know, what the woods are, and that we're more than willing to enforce those, give them specific information about violations, we're happy to do that.
It probably doesn't bother most people, unless they've got construction equipment going, unless they're roofers with the automatic doors.
Yes, sir.
Or change some.
We have to change some.
Or change some.
Yeah. Change some, we must cycle, what do you want to change some? You could hear it at Main Street in the mornings. But fortunately, they don't, I don't.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll, again, I'll ask for the pleasure of the board, how do you guys want to proceed? If we want to just think through this and maybe readdress it at the next meeting, or we can take it as a knowledge and move forward now, how do you guys want to?
I'd rather them to give it some more thought, or maybe discuss it at our next meeting when more people are present, does that make sense?
Absolutely.
If you do want to have this specific topic to, I'm happy to reach out to, or I think our expert planner over there can reach out to some, some of the individuals in the developed community, I think they would probably have a lot to say about how it would adversely impact their operations and the cost of labor, et cetera, if we restricted the hours or the push they would perform at work, that, you know, puts food on their table.
No, I think, I think that's a good point, Mr. Cordero, because, you know, obviously, at least from, from my perspective, you have to understand that a lot of times, if people are under contract, they have that house built within a certain enough time, so, and again, that's. But, well, and that's not, that's not saying that starting at 6:30 in the morning, if our hours are 7:00 to 8:00, that's okay, but if it's also not being recorded, there's not a lot we can do about it, so. Yep, appreciate it, buddy. Sorry, got a little side trip here, so.
Um, just a safe effort, I don't know that I would be indecisive in making changes right now, if that changes anybody's work area.
I don't think it would hurt anything to have on the agenda if we wanted to discuss it, but, I mean.
I can put it up for continued discussion.
Yeah. Just if anything changes. So, all right, anything else before we move along into new business? All right, hearing none, we'll jump into new business, and Emily, this is your part of the meeting, so I'll just kind of defer to you. The first thing under new business is the 2019 Tax Collectors Settlement Report.
That's quite a large one, so you care with me. All right, this is a yearly summary of the tax collections. All right, this is a yearly summary of the tax collections for 2019. Sorry, let me get that back in. Um, so for 2019, the settlement of current taxes, um, contains several different groups. First is preliminary settlement report, which includes a list of all persons still owing real and personal property taxes for 2019. Um, settlement of current taxes breaks down all charges, including billing, annuals, et cetera, and credits with your payments, releases, tax, et cetera. The third report is a settlement of delinquent taxes, that includes years 1998 through 2018. It also includes, um, the credits on this report are determined to be insolvent. Those are ones that are determined on personal property over five years old that are determined to be uncollectible as they are. Um, just because I've determined them to be uncollectible does not mean that I won't continue to try and have that collected taxes from somebody that was only insolvent in this through that cell. It just means that I can find them, they're hard to pull off, um, and I'm not going to waste money to send they late those to another one. So if our votes are in favor of the report, I haven't had these no drives, so I'm not even gonna do that. I have Tuesday's agenda, but I've been getting there. So for total taxes for 2019 that are placed in my hands, it's 1,536,059.49. Um, between payments, releases, and past due amount, um, we received 1.1,526,803.76 payments and release $600 over taxes. We have outstanding 2019 real property in the amount of $8,055.27 and personal property in $558.76. Um, delinquent taxes, we, um, the past due amount plus interest and act taxes was 105,895.19. We received payments of $82,812.50 and had $215 over tax releases. The principal amount for real and personal properties is outstanding, is $21,769. And I do have a $100 over of insolvent taxes. And again, there's a list on the backside of that that goes into there. So for the insolvent taxes, um, there is a list, it includes which year. Um, I put their own list, how old they are, and the reason that they are at this point in time uncollectible. Um, we have several businesses that have just completely gone out of business, that makes them far behind others, actively moved out of the area. Uh, we do have one that's been deceased and the state is paying all this money, so we'll never be able to collect that. So I will need a resolution approving the tax settlement, um, and to include the insolvents approved by the board. And then after that, we have order collection, which is needed to be to bill the 2020 taxes. I have received a preliminary tax roll that I am working on balancing, but I have not yet received a full tax roll. Any questions? I'll hold that.
It's a mouthful.
Lot of work going into it. Yep, uh, thank you for that, uh, Ms. Turner. So, um, you heard the report, the action requested here is to adopt resolution approving the settlement with the tax collector for insolvents. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion. Do all that.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Uh, any discussion before we move to vote?
I just wanted to say, you do an amazing job of this. I remember Turner back in the day, this is your guy, Bill, talked about like farming this out, and now it's like, man, I get 90% of it done. You do a really, really good job. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I concur. Any additional discussion before we move to vote? All right, Karen Nuttall, all in favor? And any opposed? Do we still have Commissioner Johnson, does he want to weigh in on?
We do, uh, Commissioner Johnson will call for a roll of your roll vote for the federal tax control.
Oh, I'll play, I'll play a yay on that. Yeah.
All right, well, sit tight, because hopefully you'll get another one here pretty soon. Uh, so item B, the order of collection, the action requested here, Ms. Turner, was there anything additional that you may have added to that? Okay, thank you. Um, the action requested here is approve order of collection.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
All right, got a first, sorry, I didn't mean to overtalk anybody. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote here? All right, here, any discussion? All in favor?
And I'll call Commissioner Johnson's roll vote.
Hi.
All right, and that will be non opposed, okay? Uh, moving into item C is the presentation of annexation petition 2020-2, Franklin McLeod, one of the four Tarver Road, ready.
So this is a little bit lengthy as well. This is the property, it's five neighbors, um, beside the dollar channels, the one where cash and washer dryer is currently a streaming home. It will be the five neighbors there. Uh, it will be considered a ceremony annexation because it is not typical to make a portion of the town. They are willing to develop it and based on owner's policy and voluntary annexation of the warrant and so on. Um, what I need next is to do a resolution directly to investigate the petition that I have received. You want to go ahead and do that when you need help?
Uh, yeah, we can do that. Okay, so the action requested here is to adopt resolution for, uh, the clerk to say the one more time, anyone? Sorry.
To investigate?
Yes, to investigate, uh, the petition.
I make a motion for clerk to do the investigation on the petition.
Okay, so, all right, we got a first and a second there. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, here, Nuttall, all in favor?
And I'll call Commissioner Johnson. And I'll call Commissioner Johnson's roll vote. Commissioner Johnson, are you with us?
Hi, Thor.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and, uh, any nays? All right, that motion carries there, and then. Do we, do we know what's going?
So this is, uh, this is the self-storage, um, where we have the high-density water that come in approved a few months ago. I don't remember exactly when that was, um, but this is a self-storage facility.
And is this an expansion?
No, this is a new.
Yeah, because it would be across the road from the
Right, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Wiggins, that's outside the question, yeah, okay. For, no, no, just, just one more. All right, and, um, item D is a resolution directing clerk to investigate petition C under general statutes, uh, 168-31, uh, annexation petition 2020-2. Right, I didn't, okay, sorry. Item C.
Item D, I can see it as a initiative and I agree we approve the
Okay, okay, all right, then that makes more, okay, all right. So we are under
E, okay, sorry.
It's been a while. Item E is presentation of certificate of sufficiency, annexation petition 2020-2.
As under your weathered resolution, you direct me to investigate that I received the annexation petition in the town there. I have verified the owner, whose signatures are appropriate signatures. Everything is in order for us to move forward, but things are a little bit over here.
Okay. Is it safe to say we want to do the public hearing at the next meeting, which will be?
Yes, sir.
That's okay. Do we know that, I mean, do you have the date offhand though?
Yeah, August 11th, sir.
August 11th.
I I take that that August 13th.
August 13th.
Yes, sir, Thursday, August 13th.
Okay, all right, so item F here is a resolution fixing the date of the public hearing on question of annexation uh pursuant to general statutes 168-31, annexation petition 2020-2. Um, do I hear a motion to fix a date for public hearing for August 13th, 2020?
Motion, sir.
All right, we got a motion to take, do I hear a second? All right. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And Commissioner Johnson, I will call your roll vote.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
So it's non opposed, um.
That is sufficient because the resolution has the action.
Just want to make sure, okay, perfect.
I've been double checking submission.
Okay, all right, uh, we'll move along into reports and other business. I don't have anything. I'm so sick of the pandemic, ready to bring it out from under this madness and mayhem because it's driving me bonkers. I am happy to announce that we've just got a new keys to the city, though, and these things are pretty slick, so, um, excited about that. Other than that, I got nothing. I yield my time. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, sir. Uh, everything's going well with the Public Works facility. Um, I spoke to Commissioner Wiggins' section earlier this week and just informed him that, uh, the, uh, design is pretty much complete. We are now turning it over to, uh, engineer for construction plans to be drawn. Um, so that is, uh, the pipe system on track. We received our, um, environmental approval from the US Army Corps of Engineers and we expect, uh, environmental approval from the state shortly. And so we anticipate the delivery of steel and other construction materials sometime in, uh, late September or early October. And so we'll probably break ground, break, excuse me, break ground in that building around that time and should have construction done by late January or early February timeframe. We are continuing our negotiations with the main street project in North Carolina Department of Transportation. Uh, we have had these significant changes in that situation. Uh, we're still asking them to, uh, enter into some kind of agreement whereby they'll agree to reverse this down within a specified timeframe, whether it's six months, 12 months, 18 months, and if we'd like to proceed sooner or later. Uh, we'll provide you with another update at your next meeting. Uh, as we discussed earlier, staff are preparing to the, uh, fight town ordinance to move it to 10:00 a.m. on weekends. Um, and, uh, let's get to the public hearing. We look forward to additional feedback during August 13th meeting. Uh, if you want to, uh, come on to the ordinance center, but, uh, we did add a new, uh, fleet mechanic to our Public Works team. He's already saved us some money, been repairing some lawnmowers and some other equipment. So I think that's exactly what we expected, and I think he's going to be a very good member of our team. His name is Dyron Hutton. Uh, so if you ever see him around town in their, uh, new uniforms, uh, feel free to say hello. And, uh, Ray, Dyron, and Eddie will, uh, be working together to, uh, take care of all of our Public Works issues.
How do you spell that first name?
D Y R O N.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, we've had some good recruitment activities for our police department. Uh, we, uh, had excellent recruitment for the, uh, administrative special position and we anticipated making a final decision on that very soon. Uh, I think it's a bit premature at this point to announce, but, uh, we had highly qualified people came out, hence about nine or about ten in total. Uh, we've had interviews, um, about a dozen or about eight, seven, eight. And, uh, it was a tough choice, you know, on, on, on a lot of fronts, which I think is very good. You know, all of the applicants were highly qualified, so I think we're in good shape there. And we also had some successful improvements, um, on our, uh, police officer positions and escorting positions as well. Again, a little too early, we had to complete, um, some background investigative work, but again, I think we've contracted that we'll probably qualify applicants next to some of the actions the board has taken in, uh, improving compensation and competitiveness and hiring, having the right people in the right places and dedicating the resources necessary for our enforcement teams to succeed. So I certainly appreciate you putting these efforts into another part, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cordero. Any questions for, um, the town administration?
I have, I have, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The pothole thing I sent you last week.
Yes, sir.
There's one right across the street, too.
Right across the street?
Right on.
Okay, Randy, actually, that's the one I forwarded to you, maybe you said D O T six one, right?
One right here, directly on the top line of 96. They dug that pothole there. It hurt me, it was a big man, it was, uh, put, put, uh, rocks, two gravel, it was a little bit, it was a little bit, it was pretty hot here. So that, uh, that is a service.
Wait, so we continue to work with you, team, and have been responsible, and I think, Randy, actually, we had a discussion over this after, and you made a good point that now some fiscal years, if I have a little more money for regular department or department, they have.
Those two holes are the, some got broken axle if they accidentally just missed them, you know, the white stripe by accident on both sides, so just, just a point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have one other question. Any, is there any status on that new building that was built by the railroad tracks? That was going to be a, an antique store or it's just sitting there right now?
Do you have any idea on that, Eric?
At least.
It's the yellow, I think it's yellow, right?
Uh, yeah, the
I heard they were working on getting their channel filled with
Okay, all right, that's right.
I'm not sure. God, I saw this in people today, and I'm not just working. There was, there was an issue with, um, the stormwater drain was installed in the wrong place. And so I delivered that, but it was something that they were trying to get out of. It was actually installed on the neighboring property where
I was just curious.
It's actually wrong, I thought. About four years ago, they came to us and asked for permission to do business where they are in our home.
Four years?
I thought it was eighteen months.
I don't remember it there. It's been four years. And the materials have spat up all around their house. And at least one or two mornings a week, they're going to clean up, run it, and their driveway really early in the morning. So they're actually running their business out of their
So that's right next to that building near railroad, is that right?
No.
Same place that, oh, there, for the rest of this, right here, the big guy, seeing her foot, her feet.
Yeah, that was, if I recall correctly, that was a Ms. Turner, was there a special use permit that they applied for?
Yes, I believe it was, it was a special use, but within the timeframe of eighteen months to conduct business out of their house.
Until the new structure?
And it was not supposed to be a daily, it was supposed to be, I think, one or two sales a month, maybe. I would have to go back, but it was not going to be a daily business, it would be a few sales here and there where they just opened the house and did.
We can research the issue.
In the last two weeks, they had a very substantial building
Yes, sir.
behind our house. And also, there's a stack of material across the property, I'm telling you, on town.
On our bolt town hall property?
That I actually don't tell them about several years ago, and he said it wasn't there.
But maybe it's there.
And it's still there.
The, the building, that was a shed they got for the building was a shed they got for at Fort
But they started building, they're building here a little bit, and they've got two tents that they're building here as well.
Good, anything else for Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Reddick?
Um, no, I would like to say Randy did a great job. Life in here, like this new building, and the fleet mechanic, everything's very, very, very good, and you're open heart. Um, I have community for some ice side streets, so there's lots of new people in this town, it's fun. I really love this. Come on. Don't back down, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Wiggins? Alright. Commissioner Heaven?
Just a couple things I just wanted to thank the mayor, Jim Moss, and the weed service folks for helping to clean up the roads a couple weeks ago. Cleaned up about twenty-seven or twenty-eight bags, so thank you. And it was hot as hell.
Thank you very much, I continually, it's really great.
I may need someone to help me, because I'm getting a little old. A little, not a lot. Um, the other thing, they're putting in new sidewalks on our street, which is really cool. So with that, one extension sidewalk's going to go all the way down, a blue hair, and, and, uh, that's good. That's it.
Great. Alright, thank you, that, Commissioner Johnson, still with us?
I'll go ahead, I need him if he wants to speak. Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I can help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Alright, we'll turn it over to planning and zoning.
So, last month, we had fourteen permit applications. Most of those were for new houses. Um, we also have two site plans in the middle, one for a new business, um, which is just the warehouse facility on Mother Street, and the other for expansion for Wake Electric. So we have some comments for Wake Electric, that looks like a warehouse project is getting ready for approval. Yeah, three new houses for CUC were issued. Over fifteen new signs were identified via the expenditure of eight staff hours. And approximately forty were recommenced and removed by town staff. We also nailed two notices of violation for legal signs. Both were to LGI homes, and I am monitoring those to see if they remove them by that date, and if not, town staff will remove them, and they will be assessed penalties. The impels that were in the right way, I did, it, um, this building on Nassau Street, I did issue them notice for those, but that has since been remedied. And there were some additional notices issued for traction to bring with the deadline of tomorrow for remediation. Awesome. Actually, being all about, um, the only things don't hate me, this is a forewarning, at some point in the next couple months, we will have a ton of ex amendments to review because of the new legislation. I'm sorry, in advance. This was information that Luke Flo had mentioned when we approved the YO, that chapter one sixty, one sixty, so we kind of knew what was coming, it just was a huge amount that ended up coming with.
Awesome, thanks for the great news. Any, I'm kidding, it is great news, anything else? Any questions from this one here? Alright, thank you very much. Turn it over to Lieutenant Turner.
I don't really have any, then, I was having a good meeting till nine, and the reason here tonight is because my husband's baby boy, Wyatt, is going on Monday.
Outstanding.
So I've done that. Appreciate that, thank you.
Good deal. Thank you for being here, Richard. Yes, indeed. Alright, see you quickly.
Yes, sir. It's not been going before, I'm trying to call for service and ask in comparison to two hundred and seventy-seven from the same month last year. Again, I mean, don't let those numbers alarm you, that they may significantly increase, but it just has to do with how the federal government is requiring us to report that data announcement. The increases are due to a rise in crime rates, and it's due to when we report the data. I'm happy to say that of those four hundred and twenty-two calls, there was no significant criminal activity noted. Uh, there are some highlights in there, if you'd like to take a look at them. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer. Uh, of those calls, one hundred and seventeen citations were written, mainly from minor crimes, again, like bar syndrome things of that nature. Uh, we go to twelve motor vehicle collisions compared to thirteen same month last year. There were two hit runs, and fortunately, there were no significant injuries reported and no cars transported as a result of those collisions. We're still under our traffic safety campaign, provided some numbers there for the last reporting segment, which was since the last town meeting. That was from June twenty-fifth to July first, there were thirty-three enforcement actions taken. Ten of those enforcement actions were over fifteen miles an hour over the, over the speed limit. Our officers originally focused those efforts in the downtown areas, specifically in secondary streets, as we had originally discussed, but quite frankly, the number of observed violations were so low, they kind of expanded their efforts to the major ingress and egress out of town. Got some information about that, Holden Road officers issued ten citations and issued eighteen warnings. The highest observed speed was fifty-eight miles per hour. And that's third of our hours on, so that's pretty significant. NC ninety-six at South Nassau, this will be coming into town. It's where they will set up during this campaign. They issued five speeding citations and eighteen written warnings with the highest observed speed of fifty-three. And then on Yount Boulevard, they issued three citations and eighteen written warnings with the highest observed speed of fifty-five. I actually have this much report, it came out today, again. I'll present that at the next meeting, we'll ask additional data, but the trend continues to be that the observed violations are on the decrease, and there's fewer and fewer written warnings or citations being issued. Uh, as you can imagine, with COVID- nineteen, our community policing efforts have been down, unfortunately, we're not able to have the shot for the community events, all of the common things that that issue that we typically have monthly. We anticipate resuming those activities as soon as the, as soon as cleared to do so by the government's orders. However, we do have our, our, our police department's first national night out and that's scheduled for October fourth, so hopefully, we'll be able to see that date and we'll continue to push that on that's originally scheduled for August. And that's all of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. So, obviously, I think we had a little bit of a change with the corporate limits being pushed out, and that zone is now from faith until you exit the town limits. But just out of curiosity, obviously, with that change, have I spoken with Mr. Brady about that? With that change, do we have a timeframe of when we'll kind of be a little more lenient on just writing, like, warning tickets, or are you just, are we going in gung ho and say, if you're speeding, you get the ticket, or kind of?
They've all since have been issuing warnings for that new expansion, and our intention is towards the end of this campaign, just to make an advisement. Anticipate on that this week on Facebook, like we typically do, just give her ones ahead.
Got you, perfect, perfect, take it from there.
What, can I add one thing?
Sure.
On one day going towards Wake Forest, I've been asked this quite a long time, well, not, not, yeah, but there's a thirty-five mile an hour sign, obviously, in the town limits. And then, I know the speed increases at forty-five, but I don't know where it increases at forty-five, because there's no sign.
Right, that's right, there's no sign, yeah.
We've discussed that a couple times, so, um, if we could get some help with that. It's probably DOT, I would imagine. I don't know that, where that will look at. On the Yount Boulevard, toward Wake Forest. Yeah. Down at the bottom of the curb, city limits are there. And once you go through the city limits, there's no sign, so there's no, so there's no speed. There's no sign at all. And it's been that way for at least two years. So I guess it's thirty-five, three to forty-five. There's no forty-five.
Well, then it gets to fifty-five at the top of the hill, so, yeah.
Anyway, there needs to be.
So you, what was the question?
On the other side, you want to say?
Exit the town.
So what are you saying, as soon as you, as soon as you exit out of the town limits, I mean, within, it's what, a tenth of a mile, two tenths of a mile? It's thirty-five all the way to what they would consider dead man's curve? And that's where corporate limits, yeah. But then there's no sign going up the hill towards the county line that gives any indication what the speed means.
So, would the request be that a sign be posted at the speed limit fifty-five or forty-five? Because I feel like part of the request is to graduate the speed.
I think on the other side, coming, more times forty-five. So it should be the same.
Coming, coming down the hill, it's fifty-five, I know that for a fact. So it jumps twenty miles an hour, just like that.
Repeat, I don't remember being.
Anything that we can do to, to kind of mitigate the speeders would be outstanding, because I believe one of the officers, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, one of our officers fought some warnings in front of faith baptists. They were doing like, it was fifty, over?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, totally.
Yes, sir. Okay, alright. Just wait for your, right?
I, I must have missed her the other day, because I thought when I stopped in the town hall, we had that conversation, she said someone was going like fifty over, because they had passed some vehicles, and she had to, yeah, okay. Anyway, alright. Any questions for Chief Whitten?
I have some clarification about that, it just rang a bill. We did stop a, we did stop a gentleman, and he was laid place under arrest for careless reckless driving and a number of other offenses. And he was, in fact, I believe also facing an eighty-five head in that town, so that was fifty miles an hour over, right?
Yes, sir. That was the reason to have not to be included?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, right, sir.
Well, I was just making the point that, you know, to Commissioner Heaven's point, and Commissioner Johnson's been, you know, pretty sympathetic about this. We've got a lot of people flying around here, and I don't know what is making everybody be in such a hurry to get to wherever they're going, but it's extremely dangerous. And, and I know it's a process of trying to get that, you know, slowed down and to mitigate it, but, you know, one of the beautiful things about living in a small town, is I can kind of take it a little bit relaxed and slug, and people just burning up and out the road, so.
I'm trying to tell them, tell them, all to, both Nassau, that working, turf company. They cut the corner of the floor, the floor, and they're pretty good for the water title and all, because they got the, they got the water. That's around five, five-thirty every morning. But other than that, I've seen a reduction too, as Chief Whitten has said.
Yeah, the enforcement is down.
It's definitely improved.
Big time.
I've seen the officers on one A, and I think, because I hear those cars flying down there.
I'm happy to hear, yes, sir.
So, thank you for that. Alright, don't, I didn't get a text or any kind of memo from the fire department, so we'll move along into parks and recreation. Mr. Smith?
Last night, we had our first night of kickball. It was a successful day for Fire Power. It was one of the night, it was great seeing everyone out there. It's a good partnership with Targor. They're now helping out in the concession stands. So anytime you hear some event out there, they free stop by, they have some good deals going on. We did, with Israel Leto's help, a lot of the concession stands during the downtime as he's helped taking it over this year. We're working, rescheduling the kickball event, or the class. I know, I think Commissioner Leto is interested in that. We're hoping to have that done and ready to go the first weekend of August, so I will keep you updated on that. But we'll be safe and back up there. Hopefully, in this next quarter, if everything works out, we'll be able to open in fall baseball registration for the week of July twentieth, I believe it's that Monday, so that'll be good. It's something to look forward to, all the kids in the fall, and we still plan on going ahead with the golf softball. And fall was supposed to be our first time venturing to that, other than that, that is it.
So we're baseball now?
There's.
Not the baseball?
I'm talking.
The town baseball, not the outside groups.
No, there's no town baseball, that's spring season, that's next.
This is just a recommendation, huh? Because I walk that area a lot, you know, the hills. Would it make sense to hire an outside company that has the right equipment to be able to keep that mode and maintain every periodically? I wouldn't want to send our town people out there with a, I mean, they're like, it's like a forty-five degree angle, am I right, Eric?
You have a very, I suppose.
Are you, are you talking about the?
Because it's growing again. And walking around with your, I guess you're calling circumference, is that the right word?
Or are you somebody?
On the side, walking around.
I'm three, I'm three, four.
Okay, okay, alright, alright.
Just food for thought.
I'll give Randy, certainly, see if he needs some additional equipment might be, you know, helpful, but I, I very few that certainly don't want to put those positions, you have to do anything I say. Thank you for mentioning that.
Do we have any updates on, as it's, as far as the basketball goes with lights and getting the raps and stuff like that for the fans?
Uh, the raps is not something that we put in the budget for this year, the lights, yes, there to go. The companies I shut up in Canada, so we're working with them and trying to get those shipped in. And the new gates are also going to be installed soon, they're rapid and later with service.
They're good, this. Alright. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Alright, Ms. Erb. Alright. And, last for my lease.
That's a little bit. Doesn't really deal, uh, as the career was properly at higher and higher. He's twenty-five years as a mechanic, that, that, as moving certain vehicles, and the air team, metal owners, and several others. Every equipment operator, I believe, has a department for our projects, that will help us in the future, for our purpose, every equipment. Captain Bugsy and myself and him will be meeting very soon to help address some of the curvies that the public works during with the meeting information. All people will be a big team as we develop that building to the main shop that's used it. During the bath model, again, just today, he saved us about three hundred and fifty dollars on the service repairs to the ride of horse, so provides us an extra labor. He's a very good vocal speaker. He actually worked a day for about an hour and a half, training him on small things and why, why I was out there and racing, doing some things that was actually, became a training opportunity as well. Uh, so we can see why he's a potential with that. He, uh, all said, he beautiful, the guy that's been wearing will be a, uh, four grade on one of them, fire, and what I wear, uh, but some of your, you run off there with this. We do have a new shirt coming in tomorrow, it will get warmer weather. That's like, say, real good, back to the top shirt, all, still be wearing, pretty beautiful. So if you're anyone that's above, they'll be very easily recognized. So, uh, we welcome any problems with us, uh, other than, I think we're running through that.
Good deal. Alright, any questions from the commissioners? Alright, here, thank you very much for updating. Alright, item number nine is closed session, we have no reason to go into closed session. So the next thing is adjournment, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
What is to adjourn?
Sir, I was gonna say, what? Take that.
You guys decided to stay.
I saw y'all looking at me, okay. Okay, so we got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? Here, you know, all in favor? And any others?
I'll, I'll call Commissioner Johnson to roll the, for adjournment. Alright.
Alright. This meeting is adjourned.